Good morning, Chairman, we are now live.
Good morning, I would like to welcome everyone present in the chamber and those listening online to the business of the Highways and Transport Scrutiny Committee meeting today. My name is councillor Mike Brooks and I am the chairman of this committee. Councillor Alex Hall, vice-chairman of this committee, is also in attendance. Can I remind you that the audiovisual feed of this formal public meeting is being broadcast live via the county council's website and all your comments will remain accessible online as the meeting's recording remains on the council's website. There is no fire drill planned this morning and in the event of the fire alarm sounding, we need to leave the council chamber through the rear doors and leave the building through the reception and assemble in the front car park and await further instructions. Can I request everyone present to ensure your mobiles, laptops and iPads are on silent for the duration of this meeting? May I remind you that the hearing loop is now activated. Requests to speak will be collated by the vice-chairman Alex here and we will try to ensure that everyone has the opportunity to ask questions and make contributions. However, I will close down the debate to ensure we keep to time, therefore I would appreciate contributions to be succinct and concise and also ask that you indicate early when you wish to speak. We will now move into the formal agenda. On to item one, apologies for absence and replacement members, Tom.
Thank you, Chairman, we have apologies for absence from councillor Diop.
Thank you. On to item two on the agenda, declaration of members' interests. Do we have any declarations of interest? Not all ready on the pecuniary interest forms that you complete? No? Right, I'll move on then to the minutes of the me—item three on the agenda, which is the minutes of the meeting held on the 11th of September 2023. This item is to approve the minutes of the last meeting as a correct record, please turn to pages five to 12 of the agenda pack and I will just go through it page by page just for accuracy of the minute, so if somebody—if anybody wants to make any changes, just please let me know. Page five, page six, page seven, page eight, page nine, page 10 and page 11. Could I please have somebody to propose that those minutes are accepted? Thank you councillor Stokes, have I a second there? Councillor Vernon, thank you. It's proposed and seconded, would all those in favour of the minutes please indicate? Have we anybody against? And any abstentions? Thank you. And those abstentions obviously are people who are members who were not present at the previous meeting.
Chairman, at this point, could I just add that I will be leaving for a meeting with the leader at half past 12, so just let you know.
Thank you, thank you for that. Anyway, those minutes are agreed as a correct record and so I'll move on to item four on the agenda, announcements by chairman, executive councillors and lead officers. And I would like to start off and say thank you to all the staff and emergency services for their contributions to the recent flooding incidents over the last couple of weeks. There's many officers and with the emergency services attending these events and trying to—and helping out. And I'd just like to record the thanks and appreciation of this committee for everybody who has been involved in that, so thank you. And I move on, we have a long agenda today and that includes consideration of two pre-decision items, therefore I would like to begin by asking those presenting reports to take these as read by members and only summarise key points and the type of input expected by the committee. I would also now at this point like to say that the—I visited the operational hub that it's opening on the 2nd of October on the first floor in Lancaster House and it was really worthwhile attending and quite an eye-opener to see the setup that they've got there now for controlling and coordinating the works on the highways. So there's a visit arranged today for any members of the Highways Transport Scrutiny Committee that weren't able to get to the opening and that's straight after the meeting, so I would encourage any of you that didn't manage to get along to the opening to go and have a look and just pop into Lancaster House across the way. And then I'm going to say—that's me finishing my announcement, so I'm moving on to executive councillor announcements. And do we have any announcements by councillor Richard Davies? No? Or councillor—
Good morning, Simon.
Cleo Perriton-Williams, councillor? No? So moving on then to announcements by senior officers, Karen Cassar, Assistant Director of Highways? No announcements then. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is item five. And item five is the Crosskeys Bridge Improving Resilience Report. And the report to the leader of the council and executive councillor for resources, communications and commissioning can be found on pages 13 to 20 of the agenda pack. The leader is due to consider a decision between the 3rd and 10th of November 2023. This report seeks approval for the implementation of necessary measures to enable the transition of Crosskeys Swingbridge operation to electric motors. The projected budgets for these activities amount to 1.68 million and this financial allocation encompasses the £480,000 previously earmarked for the refurbishment of the current hydraulic and PLC systems. And the actions requested from this committee is that we're asked to consider the report and determine whether we support the recommendations to the leader of the council as set out in the report and that we agree any additional comments to be passed on to the leader of the council in relation to this item. And the report will be presented by John Monk, Head of Highways Design, and I will hand over to John now to present the report and we'll have questions and comments around the committee afterwards. Over to you, John.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm also joined by Ian Booth, who's the Principal Engineer for Structures, who oversees the bridge from a technical perspective as well.
Welcome, Ian.
So trying to take the paper largely as read, I will just pull out some pertinent points. So in essence, the bridge, which I think most members of the committee will be well aware of, 1897 listed Grade II star bridge, essentially, Ian just described it to me as this before the meeting, it's a 1,000-tonne Victorian-built piece of engineering machinery which happens to carry the A17 over the River Neen. It's a fascinating piece of infrastructure, this isn't included in the paper, but we would welcome a visit at some point in the future if the committee wanted to, to come and take a tour of the bridge and see how it operates. I'd also like to take the opportunity to give credit to the dedicated and knowledgeable team of five operators who staff the bridge 24/7, 365 days a year, and their ability to operate it in normal circumstances and as they have done several times in recent years, respond to faults and issues that arise on the existing system when they arise. As reflected in the paper, we are already committed at a cost of £480,000 to an overhaul of the existing hydraulic, mechanical and operating systems of the bridge. But early discussions with potential suppliers who would—the specialist suppliers who would design and specify what was going to be done as part of that, they suggested a full electrification option for the bridge. And having looked in more detail at that, although it is significantly more costly, it does bring a lot of additional benefits over and above the existing previous proposal. Those benefits really sort of fall into four headings, the details are in the paper, but they're operational, they're related to health and safety, environmental maintenance benefits and probably more import—most importantly in terms of the impact on the highway network in terms of reliability and resilience of the bridge going forward as well. So as the chairman said in the introduction to me, the formal decision is on the forward plan in relation to the additional monies and that is to be taken between the 6th and 12th of December. So the committee is asked whether it supports the recommendations to the leader of the council as set out in the report and the committee is asked to agree any additional comments to be passed to the leader in relation to this item as well. Thanks, Chairman.
Thank you, John. And thank you also for the invitation to go and visit the bridge, for members to go and have a look and see how it works and we'll come to that towards the end of the questions and comments on this. Have I any members who wish to comment on this or ask any questions? No, no. Well, I mean, to be honest, it's—it's—
Councillor Tom Ashton.
Councillor Tom—sorry, councillor Tom Ashton.
Thank you, I'm—I'm just looking for reassurance that moving over to wholly electric operation will indeed be more reliable and more resilient, appreciating that electric motors are just as likely to go wrong as a hydraulic system. And I think, is the current hydraulic system electrically operated? Does it have manual override and will that be any part of the of the system once it goes over to electric? Is there a fail-safe built into this?
Yes, John.
Thank you, yes, there is current sort of electrical systems within the current system. The main advantage that we will have by moving to full electrification is that there will be no reliance at all on what are essentially still, some of them Victorian parts which are moved by—carry load under the hydraulic system. So although they will still move in the electrification, they won't be doing so under load. So for example, three or four weeks ago, we had a situation where one of the couplings actually broke. That would still occur under the hydraulic proposal, however, under the electrification, that wouldn't be an issue. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Councillor Stokes.
Thank you, Chairman. No, I mean, I'm fully supportive of this, this scheme is one that will bring improvements to everything with regards to the bridge. There is just one thing that I couldn't see in the report, will this cause any closure with regards to the A17 because obviously it is a key route as mentioned in in your report? Thank you.
John?
Yes, there will be some closures, however, they will be minimal and almost exclusively. In fact, I would go as far as saying that they would only be night-time closures and one-offs. And in fact, the implementation of the electrification, doing that in parallel with the existing system is an easier thing to do and less—has less impact than trying to install and implement a parallel hydraulic system with the existing one, so we'll actually have less disruption by doing it this way, we expect.
Thank you. Councillor Gibson.
Thank you, Chairman. Just wanted to echo the point you've already said, fully supportive of this, we need to look after this bridge, I'm glad to see we're putting some money into it to future-proof it. Without this bridge, we do end up cut off from Norfolk, it's a long way round without it. So happy to see that we're looking to future-proof the bridge and I thank you for the report.
Thank you. Thank you for that, I've got no more members indicating, just one quick question, is the the cost-benefit savings associated with changing to an electric motor, could you just give a quick outline of those, please, John?
Yeah, we would expect to save probably around about £40,000 a year in terms of maintenance going forward. I think the biggest saving though is, if you like, the the potential reputational and disruption savings, which are hypothetical, I appreciate, if it did have a significant issue under the hydraulic systems in the future, where as members of the committee have already pointed out, if there was a major issue with the bridge, causing the closure of the A17, the diversion route would have a massive impact on the aggrafu sector and/or on our neighbours as the diversion route would go through Wisbeach. Similarly though, if the bridge failed in such a position where the River Neen was not navigable, because we weren't able to open the bridge, then that would have an overnight impact on the port of Wisbeach, which again would have a significant negative financial impact on the economy.
Thank you, John, thank you. Right then, no more indicating to speak, so I would put that to the vote then. Could we—and I'll propose that designated scrutiny officer records the key findings that we have made, but it's wholehearted support from what I am receiving back. And I move that the committee supports the report and agrees with the recommendation—to the recommendations to the leader of the council and I ask that the comments raised by this committee be shared with the leader of the council for his consideration ahead of the decision being made. And I'm going to pop on the end there, I ask that the visit to of Crosskeys Bridge be planned in the summer of 2024 because I'd seen to get the feedback that there was agreement that we would like to go and have a look at that. So do I have a second there? Councillor Stokes, thank you, so it's been proposed and seconded, all those in favour? That's unanimous, I can see, just check, nobody against? No abstentions, so that's a unanimous agreement in favour of the recommendation. I'll now move on to item six on the agenda, which is the Highways Works Professional Services and Traffic Signals Contract Extension. And this pre-decision scrutiny report can be found on pages 21 to 54 of the agenda pack. A decision is being considered by the executive on the 7th of November and this report outlines the suggested expansion possibilities for the three primary contracts responsible for delivery—delivering a significant portion of the Highway Services project on behalf of Lincolnshire County Council. These contracts include Highways Works, Professional Services and Traffic Signals. The report requests the executives' approval for the recommended extensions detailed within the report and initiates the process of re-procuring one of the three main contracts. So I'm going to hand over now to Jonathan Evans, Head of Highways Client and Contract Management, to present the report. Thank you, Jonathan.
Thank you, Chairman. So on the 1st of April 2020, Lincolnshire County Council commenced the delivery of our highway service using three new contracts, the Highway Works Term Contract, which is delivered by Balfour Beattie, the Professional Services Contract, delivered by WSP, and the Traffic Signals Term Contract, delivered by Colas. The contracts were awarded on an initial six-year term with the potential to extend for a maximum further six years. The extensions can be awarded individually or in blocks. Within the contract, there's a specific contract refresh clause, the clause was included in the contract scope. That was done at the time of tender to enable a full review of the service. That was split into a phase of looking back and looking forward to test what was working and what wasn't with the delivery of the service that we're doing. The process commenced in spring 2022 and during that process, we set up an action plan and we made a decision as officers to defer a decision of extension at that moment in time and that was trying to focus on the areas of improvement that we'd identified with our delivery partners. We returned to that in spring 2023, we did a further review, was carried out to test the improvements against the action plans and consider any further issues that may have emerged over that time period. It's a key point that the extension clauses within the contract require the agreement of both parties to any proposed extension. So I'll move now on to the individual contracts, one by one, some of the details where we've got to as officers recommending and the decisions that we would like to put forward to scrutiny and the executive. So I'll start with the Highway Works Term Contract, Balfour Beattie. The current financial position of the contract is currently not viable in its current form. We know that because of the pain on the contract, so in its current form, the bid position that was tendered by Balfour Beattie is unsustainable in the longer term. So the actual cost, the labour, plant materials, is running somewhere in the region of eight to 10% higher than the cost to deliver the service and that puts the contract in a loss-making position. We've carried out a number of benchmarking with other authorities, we can confirm that the rates that we've received as part of this tender was unsustainable. We can see that when we look across the market of recently awarded tenders, that we are substantially lower. So it's been a really good phase probably in terms of value for money for the local county council, but longer term, it's ultimately not sustainable. Another factor in terms of the recommendations that we're making today, the volume of Highway Works contracts coming for renewal over the next few years and especially 2026 is saturated with other local authorities carrying out similar procurement exercises, so it feels like the wrong time to go back out to the market. We're likely to see more competition from contractors and ultimately have less bids coming in that are competitive. So based on those three key points, we decided to enter into a negotiation, enter a negotiated phase and that's part of the recommendations that we're making today. So the spring 22 and 23 contract refresh process focused on areas of low performance from an operational and commercial perspective, the main areas are focused with the reactive service and street lighting. So the contract duration, it's worth stating, for a for a contract like Highway Works, the Balfour Beattie one, the investment opportunities with those contracts for a longer-term contract, they exist for the purchasing of heavy goods vehicles, so fleet from both Balfour Beattie and the supply chain is a key factor where we want to make it viable and the longer we're able to offer an extension, it makes it more commercially incentivised and we'll be able to offer the service more efficiently. So as part of the negotiated position, we've proposed a deed of variation that will be adjusting the main contracts and we've done that to split it out into four key areas. So there are efficiency initiatives that are LCC and joint, efficiency initiatives that are led by Balfour Beattie, price list adjustments and then improvements to the scope so that we maximise our delivery of the service. The deed of variation ensures that the targeted performance is delivered over this next phase of contract on those areas of the reactive service and street lighting and the wider service that we deliver. We want to, where possible, remove constraints on service delivery so that we maximise value for money and we want the contract to remain sustainable for the life of the contract. Whilst we're doing all these aspects, we're also considering in terms of procurement risk and that's making sure that we've got the economic balance of the contract is maintained, so where we're lifting the prices, we're also lifting the quality of the service. So in terms of the deed of variation, we've set out 12 initiatives, these are things that the officers are recommending we do jointly with Balfour Beattie, I'll just run through a couple of these to give an example. One of them would be safety inspections, so something that we do day in, day out on our network. We want to do ad hoc safety inspections in advance of A-road surfacing schemes on a rolling programme in line with the client's works delivered outside of the contract. The benefits of that is that we're going to go in a day or two prior to works, identify any faults and near faults and the benefit of that from the term service provider is that they're able to jointly use the traffic management that's been deployed by the framework contractor and that's ultimately an improvement to the travelling public. We want to, where possible, try and de-restrict some of the the challenges, delivering sort of a pothole fix on a lower hierarchy of road, so where possible, we're going to try and implement that by removing those barriers, so where possible, we'll be doing deploying road closures on a short-term basis while we're doing shorter activity work. We're also going to be implementing a risk-based approach to the footway faults, that will be coming in the next month if this is approved, the high amp discussion, as we do for the Carriageway now, we'd like to replicate that for the footway response so that we're able to do it in a more risk-based approach and we're maximising our efficiency of service delivery. Final one, just to highlight in terms of those initiatives, we're doing—we're starting and we're doing more of this, it's implementing a programme of cold recycled bound material on footway schemes, we currently do that on the Carriageway at the moment, so that's recycling our road planings, we're likely to widen that out to our footway-carriageway and that obviously has benefits in terms of the commercial position on the contract. The total value of these initiatives are somewhere in the region of 779,000 per annum. The other elements of the deed of variation is those that are going to be led by Balfour Beattie, obviously they can just improve and they've identified that there are opportunities for improvement, so wherever possible now, we're going to have new starters to the contract introduced on a 45-hour working week, that standardises the terms and conditions that the authority have in terms of a workforce working for us. The benefit of that is what we've seen during some of the day-in-the-life-offs, so where we've been out with gangs during the summer months, we're seeing that whilst we've got the plant and fleet working, we want to maximise that again to maximise that efficiency. We've also implemented a series of hot boxes, static ones, so we've just shifted the Sturtin Hotbox to that position, that saves the time of the travelling time to a batching plan. Final one from Balfour's perspective is contractor-identified faults, I know it's important in terms of the members of the public and councillors, that whilst we're out doing a fault, a pothole fix, we are able to identify—the contractor's able to identify and fix their own faults within a certain vicinity, so we do 30 metres either way and a traffic management setup. The work that we've done over the summer period has identified that there is opportunity to do that and we'll be doing more in the future. The total value of those initiatives, the Balfour Beattie ones, is approximately 526,000. The two final elements of the deed of variation is a price list adjustment, where we are looking to adjust the price list is the reactive service, footways and street lighting, so a number of adjustments will be made which are proportionate and clearly justified by benchmarking. All adjustments will—would need—would still result in the rates being below the benchmark rates of what we're seeing with other authorities and the total value of adjustments, once the initiatives are taken into account, is approximately 1.7 million per annum. Final one is improvements to scope. So what we've done during this process to try and maximise this next phase of service delivery is looking at 21 enhancements to the scope, a good example of that is the operational control hub, it's been implemented in this phase of the work, but what we're looking for now is to make that a contractual requirement, so it's a must-do for the remainder of the contract, so that's staffing it with three additional members of staff for the duration. So the conclusion of the contract refresh process, it is recommended that the Highway Works contract provider, Balfour Beattie, is offered a six-year extension from the 31st of March 2026 to the maximum permitted extension as advertised in the original procurement documentation, taking service delivery to the 31st of March 2032. And then we've on to the final two contracts, the Professional Services Contract, which is delivered by WSP. So ultimately, the highway service needs a top-up provision, these are for positions and roles that are not 100% utilised by the service day in, day out, so we think the model is correct and therefore it remains our procurement model of choice. Unlike the Highway Works Term Service Contract, there's limited investment opportunities that present an adjustment for a longer-term extension, so like the investment in heavy goods vehicles and fleet and plant, that doesn't exist for the professional services provider, that's largely providing staffing time and they're basing LCC offices or WSP offices remote nationally. We've done again a benchmarking exercise with other authorities, the rates that we've got are good and they offer good value for money. The rates within the WS contract also correlate with the LCC engineer roles and salaries of officers working for the council, so it sort of again fits what we're doing here at Lincolnshire. So based on that analysis of the contract refresh process, it is therefore recommended that the Professional Services Contract is offered a two-year extension from the 31st of March 2026, taking service delivery to the 31st of March 2028. That contract will also go through the same contract refresh processes up to the maximum permitted six-year extension. Finally, the Traffic Signals Term Contract, which is delivered by Colas. So when we received the bids back in 2019, it was an expansion of Colas into the market and they were looking to grow their presence within the market and it's a very congested or very tight sort of market at the moment, there's probably three or four main providers in this area that are producing their own equipment and controllers, signal heads. What we found during this phase is that Colas have struggled to expand in that market. We've also seen issues such as reliance or key people leaving the contract, so nationally Colas haven't won additional contracts, so they don't have much resilience and as officers were— and as officers, we're a bit fearful of if we lose a few key people in Lincolnshire that we won't have that backup and that ability to carry on with service delivery. As part of the original bid, Colas had intended to manufacture a number of key items of equipment, but due to that lack of probably expansion into the market, they've been unable to justify the investments required to facilitate that production, and that forces the contract into a difficult market position than we originally intended. What I would say, though, is the ability of the locals' teams delivering the service has been excellent. So those that are based in the Grantham office and the sort of the management team in terms of the contract performance measures, they're doing an excellent job. It's the sort of the larger picture about the resilience, which is the fear, and probably the reason why we're making this recommendation. So for this traffic signals contract, it's recommended that we do not extend, and a new re-procurement process is commenced, and that would likely start once this decision is made at the executive. That concludes my update. Thank you, Chairman. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Jonathan. I'd just like to say that the committee's asked to consider the report and determine whether we support the recommendations the executive has set out in the report, and that we agree any additional comments to be passed to the executive in relation to this item. And now I'll open it up to Members, councillor Clark.
Thank you, Chairman. Jonathan, I'm not sure what the term is, if it's social awareness, but high-volume contracts like this, surely there should be, for the residents, apprenticeships for people, you know, for the youths. And I know in the past it's said that one or two, you know, apprentices were taken on, but really, for the price of this contract, there should be a lot more than that. Thank you.
Jonathan.
Yeah, it definitely has been a challenge in years one, two and three during the pandemic and Covid. It has started to pick up of late, so in the performance report that I bring on a quarterly basis, we're seeing probably for the Balfour BT contract, nine apprentices now, so that's had a bit of an upturn. We're also introducing care leavers, working with our adult care part of the service. That's had some success recently. We've introduced two members of staff into that area, and we're also implementing a number of social value volunteering schemes into that wider community. So it's having some benefits. We can always do more, and we'll make that, for those that we are looking to extend, we'll make sure that that's re-emphasised with them during this next phase of the works.
Thank you, Jonathan. Have I anyone else who's, councillor Vernon?
Thank you, Chairman. I've just got a few points to make regarding the document. Under item 2.1, the contract clause allowing damages to be paid should performance not meet required levels, it's really disappointing that that sort of needs to be the case, but it clearly has focused supplier retention from the figure shown in the report. Going into 3.2 for the recruitment of locally-based staff, I'm really glad to see that the focus is on training and mentoring junior staff. Recruitment and retention is really tricky at the moment, and we've heard sort of in previous meetings about how challenging it is in this particular sector. So we really do have to plan ahead to develop our own staff, and I'd support councillor Clark's comments regarding further apprentices as well being sort of given the opportunities to work in that. The final thing sort of obviously is that I'm really heartened to hear that Colas have done the best job that they can, but it just seems sort of perhaps that this is perhaps too much for them at this time, and they don't have the procedures and the resilience in place that we need as an authority to ensure stability in the future. So yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Vernon. Have we any other comments, question? Well, I've got a question that I'd like to ask, please. What percentage of the contract is the budget pressure of £1,785,000? What percentage of the total contract is that? And also, when you, we say how much extra this is going to cost to, when reviewing this contract and renewing it for another six years, it does mention in paragraph 317 that that would be, will be offset by the lifting prices above to improve, these improvements to service delivery will offset this 1.7-plus million. Could you expand on that a bit, please, Jonathan? Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. In terms of the uplifting the prices, in terms of the annual throughput of the Balfour BT, the Highway Works contract, it's probably somewhere in the region of 4%. So it's a relatively small increase compared with sort of a risk of procurement, but that's sort of acceptable within the market. What we're doing within item, the procurement section of item seven is discussing, we've talked with legal and our procurement colleagues within the county council, that the proposals that we're making here are done in such a way to lift the price list of those areas that we know is, the market rates are higher than what was bid originally, and what we're doing is offsetting it with a number of improvements that we're making to the quality. And that's all about maintaining the economic balance of the contract, and that's about procurement risk. Where we're lifting the price list items, we are going to be creating a budget pressure in terms of that 4% that will be added to the medium-term financial plan of the local county council, or it'll be consumed within the highway budget as it exists at the moment. But those uplifting and quality aspects of what we want to target over the next, it'll be eight-year period for the Highway Works contract now, is making sure that we're not pushing just uplifting the prices, we're also raising the quality to offset each other in terms of that procurement risk. But what I would say in terms of the negotiated position, as an officer of the council, I'm certain we've got the best deal here in terms of value for money in the residents of Lincolnshire. It's been a long process, but I do think it's the right one ultimately that we're recommending.
Yeah, so those improvements that offset the uplifting prices, they're already taken into account when that's 1.785 million sum, that's the number after those offsets are taken into consideration, is that right?
Yes, there's a number of the initiatives that we're doing. They're there to try and offset the fundamental sustainability of the contract. If we implement all of those, our price list adjustment will only be 1.7 million, which is a big number, but we know that that's the right thing to do in terms of the actual cost of the service, and it's that benchmarking with other authorities. And what we have done is lift the quality criteria of the contract going forward to make sure we've got that economic balance right. But yes, councillor Brooks.
And just one more. On the traffic signals term contract, are there any costs associated with not renewing the contract and going out and seeking a new contract? How much more is that going to cost us than against if we renewed the contract? And I know there's a lot of good reasons why we shouldn't do that, but is there a cost to that? Thank you.
In terms of procurement, we will deliver this procurement exercise in-house sort of thing, so we won't bring any external consultants in. So it's more pulling officer time into this re-procurement phase. We'll obviously have the support of the LCC central procurement team who have got a dedicated lead for this, and as the officers of working within highways, we'll be doing it as part of our day-to-day job. So in terms of a number, I would be estimating somewhere in the region of £20,000 to £30,000 that'll be allocated, and it'll mainly be staffing time to do this process. There's obviously a risk if we, with any procurement exercise, that when you go back out to the market, there's a commercial or financial risk of getting the procurement wrong, but that's something that we've taken into account with this recommendation because of those resilience concerns we've got in the wider traffic signals business.
Right, thank you. Thanks for that. Yes, councillor Guzman.
Thank you, Chairman. I know there's obviously lots of money involved here with big numbers. I'm just heartened to see that it comes with an improvement in performance and not a cutting of areas. I think that's a fantastic thing that you've obviously been involved in and negotiated. Things like the hot box I've had in my area for quite a few times, and the difference that makes to a whole area is massive, not just one pothole, you're talking about whole roads within a day, and that's fantastic. And also the councillor volunteer scheme, that's an asset for us in Lincolnshire. As you know, I've just had a project finished and it's made a massive difference to my specific area, so I'm on board with the whole report.
Thank you. Have anybody else before I close this? Right, I'm going to move on then. So I propose that our designated scrutiny officer records the key findings and comments raised by the committee. I think there's one or two there. There was the, we're pleased to see the improvements in performance proposed in the new contract, and the improvements proposed there, and look forward to those being delivered. There was a social improvements mentioned by councillor Clark. Apprenticeships, we're pleased to see the apprenticeships proposed in here and that have been happening already, and would like to see more, if possible, please. And I think if those are probably the main points that came out of that. And I also move that the committee supports the report and agrees with the recommendations to the leader of the council, and I ask that the comments raised by this committee be shared with the leader of the council for his consideration ahead of the decision being made. Do I have a second? I have councillor Strangle this time, thank you. So that's been moved and seconded. With all those in favour, please indicate. And that is unanimous, I'm not going to ask for against or abstained, I can see that that's unanimous. Thank you, everyone, thank you. Right, and we move on to item seven on the agenda now, which is Anglian Water Street Works Performance Update on the Action Plan. The scrutiny report is on pages 55 to 64 of the Agenda Pack, and the report follows on the report considered on the 24th of April 2023 on Agenda Item Five, and provides an update on Anglian Water's performance when undertaking work on or next to the highway as part of its statutory undertakings. And the committee is invited to review and comment on the contents of the report, ask questions of Anglian Water regarding the report, and make recommendations as we see fit, and request that a further update report on the proposed action plan is added on our future work programme, proposed looking at probably summer 2024. This report will be presented by Mick Pean, its traffic manager, and Ashley Bean, Street Works and permitting manager, and Anglian Water representatives. And we have Sean McCarthy, head of network operations and Leakey's Anglian Water, Carty Pugh, Street Works manager, Anglian Water, and Mark Keary, area manager, Clancy Dockra. Welcome to all, and thank you for coming to speak to us today at this committee meeting. So I'll hand over to...
Mark Keary from our partner sends his apologies.
Oh, sorry, yeah, yeah.
We had a bit of a cross this morning, so he's had to go south.
Right, I've got him on my notes, he's going to be present.
Thank you.
I accept his apologies, thanks. Right, so I'm going to hand over now to Mick and Ashley to start off, and I'm sure Anglian Water will be coming in on that. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. Morning, all. Six months ago, it seems to have gone very quickly since we were last here in April, so I'm pleased to be back with this report to present some really positive steps taken by Anglian Water in the previous six months, which we'll run through this morning. So thanks to Sean and Carty for attending, and Sean will give a short presentation and update at the end of this report. So to summarise where we are, I think, you know, six months is a short space of time in the construction and civils industry, and in that time, we've been working really well with Anglian Water to really drive some of the improvements that we wanted for the highway network. Obviously, back in April, Anglian Water were asked to attend the committee because of some lack of performance that was impacting on residents and road users, and there was some real frustration around particularly road closures that were taking place. So one of the big things that came out of the April committee meeting was really driving forward the Lincolnshire Street Works charter, which, you know, as a county council, we'd wanted to introduce for a long time. So really pleased to say that on the 1st of September, we launched that charter with 10 utility companies, including Anglian Water and also our contract partners. So that charter really does commit to working collaboratively to drive improvement around traffic management and safety and the communication of works which takes place. So we have a meeting in the diary actually later this week to come back together and start working towards really putting those improvements in place on the ground, so that's the first positive step. It's really fair to say that Anglian Water have taken our feedback on our comments and the impact of their works really seriously. We know that Anglian Water are Lincolnshire's biggest utility, so by the nature of what they do on the network, they're going to have the greatest impact. So following the committee in April, they launched a road closure reduction project with significant investment, which was around looking at different methods of traffic management to avoid road closures wherever they can. And I'm pleased to say that in Lincolnshire, since April, that's already prevented 56 unnecessary road closures taking place on our roads, and we continue the discussions about creative ways to think about traffic management that can avoid road closures. One of the biggest areas that the committee fed back to us on previously was around road closures, unnecessary road closures and the duration of road closures. So I'm pleased to say that monitoring in the last six months, Anglian Water have improved the completion of timeframe of these road closures by 14%, nearly 15%, which I think in six months is a really pleasing place to be. So we're now at 67% of Anglian Water road closures are completed in three working days. We are quietly confident between us, both ourselves and Anglian Water, that we can get that somewhere near 80%. So through the further works that we're going to look at over the next few months, we're hoping to see that improve. With regards to all types of work, all types of work is completed with an improvement as well. So around about 70% of everything is completed in three days, and 95% of their works with intrusive traffic management is completed in five days. So we're in an ever-improving position, which is good to see. Anglian Water have invested in some traffic management training for their staff, delivered by a leading industry professional, which we attended and we think is really worthwhile in terms of them determining the right traffic management to use. They've had a 60% reduction in the number of reinstatement defects that's outstanding on the road network, and obviously in terms of the longevity of our highway asset, making sure it's put back right and stays right, that's really pleasing from our point of view. Throughout all of this, as well as working collaboratively with them, we have increased our onsite monitoring. So we're inspecting around 40 to 45% of any works that are undertaken by Anglian Water at any one time. Naturally, this has led to an increase in fixed penalty notices, which is shared in the report. What I would say on that is the majority of those increases are around the administrative offences, so it's not the things that people on the ground will see day-to-day, and we're working with Anglian Water, and Sean will present some of the system improvements that they've got in order to improve those. What we have also seen is a 74% reduction in the number of overstays, so the number of times they are working after their permit dates are finished, which is really great to see, so there is much more compliance in terms of permit dates. We've carried on undertaking inspections at weekends, and I'm pleased to say there's been a big improvement by Anglian Water on our weekend inspections as well. So through last financial year, in our weekend inspections, we were finding significant levels of non-compliance and overstays at the weekend. Since April, this has reduced to virtually nothing from Anglian Water, which is brilliant. So we're really confident Anglian Water are heading in the right direction, we're working with them really well, and some of the initiatives that they've put in place will really reduce disruption. And whilst there is a short-term increase in things like fixed penalty notices, we're really hopeful that with the work that's going on and the investment that they're making, there will be a long-term improvement. We want to do that as collaboratively as we can to see that improvement on the ground, you know, and in the meantime, we will continue working really closely with them, and, you know, if there is non-compliance, we will continue to issue penalties. So that sort of concludes the report from my point of view. Tom, have you got Anglian Water's slide you could put on the screen? So we'll just get that up, and then I'll hand over... So we'll just get that, that up and then I'll hand over to Sean to go through here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ashley. Yeah, I just wanted to reinforce that the improvement plan, which is still ongoing and really active, is a, a true collaborative piece, working with Ashley and the team. And I thank, I thank the highways team for working really closely with my management, senior management team to make the improvements. Lots more to do and lots more to go at, but I think, as you can see, we're, we're making, we're making a step change in our performance because we do treat this subject very seriously. Just one of the elements I wanted to touch on around our investment. We're, Ashley touched on that some of our systems are not joined up properly and they cause an impact, especially around the FPN, the fixed penalty notices pieces. Last time I came to see you, I talked about a potential, a potential investment from my business. And this is really the summary of where we are with that. That was signed off from my business, so the seven hundred and fifty K is now embedded and we are working with our partner organisations to bring our new system into play. That will smooth our processes, that'll smooth our interchange of information across the highways. And it's not just a ITIS system project we're doing, it's an end to end review with our lean practitioners and our lean consultants to make sure that whatever we produce out of this is not just a IS improvement, it's a real tangible improvement on the ground. And that seven hundred and fifty is, 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 has been signed off and is in excess of the three hundred and fifty thousand pounds that was, I was given to improve our, our ability to impact road closures in a positive way across the East Anglia. The system that we're talking about is not just exclusive to Lincolnshire, it will integrate and work with all of the systems across all of the highways agencies across the East Anglia region. The, the, the learning that we've taken from working with Lincolnshire Highways on our road closure project, Carty and the team have also taken across to other agencies right across our region, whether that's Beds, Northampton, any of the agencies that we're actually working. So we've taken the learning, the collaborative piece that we've done with, with Lincolnshire Highways and we've taken that and we're, we're making those changes across the board. So I think the collaborative improvements we're making is not just isolated to Lincolnshire, we're making those and we can see that tangible benefit. So again, thanks for the team, for, for the highways team, for, for that piece that we've been doing with those and that will, that will continue. I'm happy to take any questions on any elements on the, on the project, on the systems improvements or any of the, on the improvements that we've made in the last six months since we've seen you. Thank you for that, Sean, thank you. Councillor Strangle has got a question then.
First a comment and then a question, thank you chairman and thank you Ashley and thank you Sean for your report. I must say in your favour, Sean, very pleased in my Patch Birchwood division that you repaired eight sunken manhole covers, but I've noticed in the rest of the city that perhaps that should be adhered to as well. So that's just a comment basically. Question chairman, whether this is a typo on page sixty that the LCC recovered costs of circa two hundred and twenty pounds? Or is it two hundred and twenty thousand pounds? And there should have been a zero at the end of it, but that's just a, a typo. Second, thirdly, and this could be both highways and Anglian Water, when you've done a job, can you remove signs and cones? I've had a resident in Nettleham Road report that there's a traffic cone being pushed down all the way from Longdale's and it's actually got all this far, all the way down to outside number seven Nettleham Road. So somebody keeps kicking this thing down the road and I've noticed a few other cones around that people, you know, when you finish the job, pick them up, take them away and especially on diversion signs, you get a diversion sign. Now, I ignore them now because quite honestly, you carry on and there's no diversion, you know. So just remove them, please, that's just a plea, thank you. Thank you chairman.
Thank you councillor Strangle, I think the removal of signs is supposed to be part of this improvement project, but I'll hand over.
Yeah, thanks councillor Strangle, we'll, we'll have a look at the sign, at the cone at seven Nettleham Road and, and pick it up. I think in, in terms of the Anglian Water piece and, and leaving items behind, you know, that seventy four percent reduction in overstays is a, is a real positive thing from Anglian Water. And across all utility companies and ourselves, there has been a, a general improvement in the number of items left behind. My team are out and about on the ground every day, we can't be everywhere, but we could be anywhere and, and we really are trying to, to, to spot these things when we can. So yeah, we'll, we'll take that up.
Thanks, thanks Ashley, thanks councillor. What I would say is that from the sign removal, absolutely, it's, it's crucial that we do get them removed in a timely manner. And the two hundred and twenty thousand pounds that you see is an impact to my business, it's a cost amongst other lots of other costs that we incur and that cost, some of that cost is that we're, we're not, we're leaving signs when we've, we've got no need to. So we, Ash's team and the highways teams, other teams, we do get fined for that, it's our interest to remove them. So absolutely, that's something that we are absolutely laser focused on. Thank you.
And, and it was a typo councillor Strangle, it's two hundred and twenty thousand, yeah, just to be clear.
Thank you for that, thank you. Right, I'll move on then to councillor Stokes.
Yes, thank you chairman. I certainly do welcome the improved compliance of Anglian Water. There are still further improvements that need to be made. I mean, I'm, as a customer of Anglian Water, I don't think we've got any choice in this room. I'm still extremely disappointed about the number of fines that are being issued by LCC to Anglian Water. With regards to the report on page sixty, I mean, I, I find it disappointing that Anglian Water still took one hundred and sixty three road closures without any applications for those. I don't, I personally don't think that's acceptable and I know there has been improvements from April from twenty three percent. And also with regards to defects, it's a two hundred and fifty outstanding which were greater than six months and that's been reduced by sixty percent. But then in the next line, it says there, there is currently three hundred and eighty reinstatement defects outstanding. I'm assuming that they are up to, they are within a period of not greater than six months. But I still think that's quite a high number and Anglian Water need to improve that as well. Thank you.
I can take that one, thank you.
Thank you.
With regards to the, the road closure application, so there was, there was a gap in, in our process, which we recognise from speaking to Ashley and his team, where most of those were done out of hours as emergencies. We don't have back office planners who, who come in on the, sort of the next day and they weren't being picked up, but we've, we've, we've identified that since it's been highlighted and we should be able to further reduce those. Our aim is to, to, to get to zero, really, every, every single one should be applied for, you're absolutely right. In terms of the reinstatement defects, do you want to comment on that?
Yeah, absolutely. We've got an active plan with, with Ashley and the team to further reduce those down and as you say councillor, get those down to an appropriate level. We shouldn't be having defects in the first place and we are working with our partners to make sure that where those defects happen, we find root cause and find what's wrong. Because I think that's, that's ultimately where we need to get to is stop those defects happening in first place. Where we do, we're, we're, we're colleagues from the highways agencies who do find defects. As I say, we have made a marked reduction in that, but as you rightfully said, a lot more work to do in that area and working within that, within, within very real time scale. Six months is far too long anyway for a defect, absolutely agree with you. So we're working with our reinstatement colleagues and our reinstatement providers to make sure that that is a target to, to, to reduce those numbers significantly. And just on what Carty said around the, the piece around, we have employed and we have now got people working seven days a week within the highways team. Part of the analysis that we did on the, of the, of the falling down of those permits that you rightfully highlighted were mostly, as Carty said, out of hours over weekend. The system improvements that I put up earlier around the automated new system, seven hundred and fifty thousand pounds worth of investment, nearly a million pounds that we put in there, will go some way to, to deal with those out of hours. In the meantime, we've employed people over the weekends to actively combat that and that was on the back of our discussions last time I came councillor. Thank you. Thank you for that. Gais Clark.
Thank you chair. Yeah, I'm glad the, you know, we got the report today because one wet afternoon, I spent reading the Partners Holding Company annual report and a lot was said in that report about profit shareholders and nothing about improving the service, which felt amazing. But, you know, the reports dealt with that. I've got a general question. It's not, nothing to do with the report, but I've been through all the other channels and just got stonewalled basically. And the question is during the floods, at least three non-return valves failed causing flooding in my division. Are the said non-return valves maintained and if they are, why did they fail?
Thank you for the question councillor, I will have to, I'm afraid I'll have to come back to you on that, I will come back to you direct, I have to speak, I'm, to, to one of my colleagues, senior managers within the water recycling team, so I look after water infra, which is potable water, but we will get you the answer you require, I will make sure it comes direct to yourself. Thank you councillor. Yeah, I think you might just strayed off highways then onto flood and water management, but it's, but it doesn't matter, you know, the question's been asked and the answer will come to it.
The flood was on a highway.
All right, fair enough. Right, thanks councillor Clark, councillor Ashton.
Thank you. Colleagues have already picked up on some of the points that I was intending to make, but I would start by saying that I'm really, really pleased to see the progress is being made. I sort of look at this as very much glass half full rather than half empty. And it's just nice, isn't it, that the process is that this committee, when stuff is raised here, it gets taken forward and action follows. And I'm really, really pleased to see that we, as a course of this, we prevented fifty six road closures which would otherwise have taken place. That feels like it rather vindicates what we have been, what, what as local members and members of this committee were saying at the time, that quite often there's roads closed that shouldn't have been. And I think my question would be, how many, are we confident that we, we've bottomed this out? Are there more road closures that with, with different or better working practices that they don't necessarily need to, to be full closures? Is, is there somewhere else where we can, we can, we could advance this a little bit further? And like, and, and in addition, really pleased to see that where we are seeing road closures, they're being reduced again to three, three days wherever possible. Again, I, I hear we're, we're going to try to be more ambitious on that, but the old, the, the age old concern is that there is a road closure, but there's nothing happening. Are we, are we confident that we've, we, you know, that, that we can, that we can keep going down that route and, and reduce those closures ever more? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you councillor, I'll, I'll hand over to Ashley and I thank you for your comments and absolutely, I think it's not just the scrutiny commission, it's, it's also committees, that working with highways that is putting these improvements in place, so I welcome your comments, thank you for that. Is there more we can do on road closures? Absolutely, every road closure, we are aware impacts Lincolnshire residents and, you know, the, the road infrastructure. I do not, and my business does not want to put road closures in place, we want to try and mitigate those as much as possible. We're using hot boxes, similar to we've heard through highways agencies, we're trying first time permit reinstatement on those hot boxes, trying to push as much work channelled through there as we can so that we don't put road closures in place, we can get off very quickly within the highways. We've got lots of different initiatives running. That three hundred and fifty thousand that I talked on top of seven hundred and fifty thousand that we've put into the systems, those project and programme managers continue with that piece of work and we continue working with Ashley's team to test how far we can get where we don't want to put road closures up. Clearly, we have a duty of care to our, my employees, Anglian Water's employees and the general public. So yes, we need to put road closures up, but we're appropriate, but how far we are pushing, really trying to push that envelope, see if we can reduce that amount. I don't know if you want to add to that Ashley?
Yeah, thanks Sean, I just echo what Sean, Sean says really, I think we, we definitely know there are more opportunities to be had with other types of traffic management and we're, we're working through those as a, as a team. You know, one, one idea which is in the report is around use of fifteen minute delay boards for, for short term works that are out of, of carriageway in, in rural areas, rather than putting formal road closures on and, and leaving them there for, for three days. So yeah, there's, there's more to be done. As Sean said, the, the, the health, safety and the welfare of both the workforce and highway users is really important and, and, you know, both ourselves and Anglian Water are governed by, governed by really stringent health and safety legislation around carriageway widths and road closures. We, we know that code of practice is going to be reviewed nationally at some point over the next eighteen months. So that might unlock some more potential for dynamic risk assessments to take place that will allow us to move away from, from road closures as well. So yeah, there's, there's lots more to be done, but you know, I'm, I'm confident we, we are heading in the right direction.
Thank you for that. Councillor Gibson.
Thank you chairman, just want to echo councillor Ashton's points there that this is definitely a positive. Six months ago when we sat here, it, it, it did feel like you was coming in front of the firing squad with your hands up, if I'm honest. We all had lots of emails and, and issues in our, our specific areas. I had quite a few and they, they were fixed quite quickly and I've got nothing since. So if that is something to tell from, from the last six months, I, all I would say is please continue with the improvements and thank you from our side that I don't seem to have any massive issues at the moment.
Thank you. No, I don't think there's anything to come out as an appreciation comment. Councillor Vernon.
Thank you chairman. Again, sort of councillors Ashton and Gibson have sort of mentioned really what I wanted to say about how positive it is to hear about all the improvements and particularly with the collaborative working. One thing I would like to ask about is the trial of the temporary obstruction fifteen minute delays and how that could work in practice and what sort of the logistics are in terms of percentages that you think may be able to be solved by that and sort of how, yeah, how that will work in practice. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Yeah, we've, we've, we've trialled this previously and there is, there is a mixture of environments you can work in, operating in urban is quite difficult, as you can imagine with fifteen minutes. However, what you can do, where you can put fifteen minutes within urban areas, is something we're testing within, within Lincoln, is where you have other routes vehicles can take, fifteen minute waitboards can be very successful. I do think though councillor, there'll, there'll be probably more pertinent within the rural areas where we've, where we, we don't feel that the road closures, they're grey, as in the width of the road can be very tight, but I think the fifteen minute waitboards can allow us to work safely and appropriately in certain circumstances. Could I put a percentage on, not, I, I, the, the project team and programme team are working with the highways and really testing with, with Ashley's team where we think we are happy to come back, when we come back to talk to you about it or even send you something more detailed around what percentage we can, think we can make through our project and programme team. So happy to reply direct to that through Ashley. Okay, yes Gais, of course.
Thank you chairman. Actually, that's exactly the point that sort of I think I was hoping for you to hear, that it would be more appropriate to use in the rural areas where a diversion can take eighteen, nineteen miles to avoid a certain stretch of road. So that's really, glad to hear that that possibly could be the case and I'll look forward to seeing that implemented. Thank you.
Thank you. Have we any other further comments or no, I don't think there is. Right, I'm going to move on then. The, the committee is invited to review and comment, which we've done, to ask questions, which we run and request a further update report next year on the proposal for the summer of two thousand and twenty four. So we look forward to that. So I would like to say that we record the key findings which have been captured. I think probably, well, I'm sure that the, the main thing is to say, we're, the committee is pleased and welcome the improvements that have been reported in the traffic management and everything on streetworks from Anglian Water. That's much appreciated, we appreciate that Anglian Water have put seven hundred and fifty thousand more into investing in this and showing a real positive attitude towards improving their performance on streetwork and look forward to the fixed penalty.
And look forward to the fixed penalty notices situation improving dramatically for the next report, next, in 2024. So I would move that the report be received, that the committee's satisfaction be recorded on the, the progress reported to date. And I ask that our comments and suggestions made in relation to the aforementioned be taken in, under consideration by our Angling Water partners and relevant Lincolnshire County Council officers and the executive portfolio holder. And I ask that a further report on progress be submitted in the summer of 2024. And also, sort of say thank you for your attendance at this morning's meeting and the reports that you've given. It's appreciated the cooperation that Angling Water have given to Lincolnshire County Council over this issue. So, thank you. So couldn't we move to the, all those in favour of that? That's unanimous. I'm not going to ask for anybody against or abstaining. So thank you, and I'll move on to the next item on the agenda. Right. The next item on the agenda is proposals for scrutiny reviews. And this committee has requested to consider whether it would wish to make a suggestion for a potential scrutiny review topic to the OVO and scrutiny management board. The report is on pages 65 to 72. Suggestions put forward today will be reviewed through the scrutiny prioritisation toolkit, which will allow the scrutiny team to access, to assess the level of priority and urgency of each topic identified by each committee and make relevant recommendations to the OVO and scrutiny management board. And our actions include that we consider the requests from the OVO and scrutiny management board for a suggestion for an in-depth scrutiny review by scrutiny panel A, bearing in mind the following criteria found on page 69 and detailed in appendix A in the report. The officer representing will be Kiara, and our scrutiny officer. And so I'm going to hand, and we'll be taking any questions and suggestions at the end of the, at the end after Kiara is presented. So over to you, Kiara.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. The report before you seeks to consult members of this committee regarding a potential allocation of an in-depth review to scrutiny panel A. The criteria to be met, as you stated, for a topic to be put forward for consideration are listed under the section Actions Required on Page 65 of the report, and again, they're detailed in appendix A. When considering a potential topic for a scrutiny review, the overview and scrutiny management board will reflect on the level of priority of a topic or thematic area, and will need to ensure that the topic is not duplicating work that is carried out elsewhere, whether within this organisation or by any of our partners. Moreover, it must be ensured that the scope is not too broad and that an in-depth review can be completed within a set timescale. In section six, which can be found on page 67 of the report, you will find commentary received by the executive director of Place. On this occasion, a topic for consideration has not been proposed. This is on the basis that in 2022, 2023, two scrutiny reviews were carried out in parallel by the two scrutiny panels, both of which fell within the remit of Place Directorate. This created some pressures on resource allocation, as these reviews run in conjunction with other businesses' usual activity and other programmes and projects run at the time. In addition to this, there is the existing allocation of a review topic entitled Traffic Management Policy Review to scrutiny panel B, which will be overseen by the scrutiny committee and aligns with the Place Directorate's remit, as well as the presence of another two significant ongoing transformation projects within communities and Place. And that, again, would potentially create substantial workload demands. Nevertheless, members are still able to make further suggestions as part of today's discussion that will follow shortly. Any topics to be put forward will be subsequently included in the final report to the overview and scrutiny management board. Topics will be filtered through a prioritisation toolkit that can be found on appendix A for your perusal. Finally, topics from all scrutiny committees will be considered on the 21st of December, when the overview and scrutiny management board will agree which of these will be allocated to scrutiny panel A. This concludes my briefing to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kiara. Are there any comments from the committee on this? Councillor Clark.
Thank you, Chairman. The paragraph six, review topic, traffic management policy, is that the parking on the paths? Because I believe there's a, I don't know if it's coming out yet, a white paper been completed by a government that they've sat on for three years. Wouldn't it be advisable to get that paper first? Or can we work without it?
Well, I think, I'll, I think it could be waiting for a long time if you wait for, for that sort of thing. I think scrutiny panel, it's already been decided that scrutiny panel B will get on with that work on traffic management. That's all been agreed, and that is the next scrutiny panel B review. So I think it'd be, we'd be wrong to start waiting for things coming from central government, because parking on pavements has been an issue for years and years and years, certainly as long as I've been on council. And national governments of all colours have been going to do something about it. So, you know, we're still waiting for a decision on that. That's, that's my take on it anyway. But, but thanks for the comment. I'd, I'd like some, I'd like some guidance from national government on what, you know, on some sort of legislation on parking on pavements. It's not come yet. Yes, councillor Strangel?
Thank you, Chairman. If I could take members through to page 71. It's not on, so I'll go back to the start. If I can take members through to page 71, and you indeed, Chairman, prioritisation tool, I'll get that out. It's interesting, that tool, obviously, you have to answer yes to everything except for one no that's in there, I can understand that. But when you go further down, it says, is the council due to review the relevant policy area? Now, if you're bringing something through that's brand new, the council might not be reviewing that policy area. So if you answer no to that, is that the end of it? It, it just doesn't quite follow in my mind. Perhaps I'm reading it wrong, but I'm sure somebody will correct me if that's the case. Thank you.
Kiara's not in there, she's, she can help.
Thank you very much. So the, the toolkit will allow us to flag the level of priority of each topic that will be put forward for consideration. So it will allow us to create a list of themes, a library of themes, that will be rag-rated based on this toolkit. So to answer in a very simple, but hopefully straightforward way, no, this is not the end of, if that question is answered in a no, but that could affect the overall level of priority that the certain specific topic will be classed in. Thank you.
Thanks, councillor Strangle. Do you want to come back on that?
If you allow me, please. Thank you, Chairman. I'm just interested, because for instance, I'll just give you an example of a topic I think that could affect probably every area of Lincolnshire, and indeed every area of the UK, to be honest, which is parking outside schools. And I know we did a little survey with a, a remote vehicle which was sat outside certain schools in Lincoln to do a survey, and nothing really happened from that. But it is an area, and I'm dealing with one of these issues myself with a school in my division, and it's a major issue for residents. But it's something that really needs to be scrutinised in further detail and what, what we can do. Whether that's anything to do with what you're saying, Kiara, I'm not quite sure, but I just thought I'd make that point.
Yeah, can I come in there, councillor Strangle? That is going to be part of the traffic management review that is taking place with scrutiny panel B. The outside of schools policy is all wrapped up in that same, in traffic management policy, so it will be looked at as part of that. It's quite a big review, and that's why it's probably going to take the best part of 12 months for a report back on it. Okay. Is that, yeah, yeah, that's fine, yeah. Thank you. Have we any other comments? No, I mean, I must say, I, I agree with the report. We've, we've got a big, highways transport scrutiny committee have got a really big review in at the moment, and it's gone to scrutiny panel B. The, the sort of pressures, other reviews coming, suggestions coming from this panel would be on the Place Directorate. You know, they can, they can only do so much at once, so I'm happy to go along with a proposal that this, that this scrutiny committee doesn't put anything forward for a review at this point in time. And seeing no one, no one indicating, I'm going to move that committee, the committee notes the report and proposes the, that we haven't identified a topic, it says, so that the OVO and scrutiny management board be advised of the highways and transport scrutiny committee does not wish to put forward any suggestions for a scrutiny review by scrutiny panel A on the basis of the statement from the executive director as set out in section six of this report. Does anyone dissent from that? No. So that's agreed then. We move on to the next item on the agenda, which is Transport Connect, yes, and thank you, everybody involved with that. Transport Connect Limited Techile Company update report. And this scrutiny report is on pages 73 to 76 of the Agenda Pack. This report provides an update on the activities and performance of the council's Techile Company Limited, TCL. Since the previous report considered in October 2022, the purpose of the report is to provide a summary of the strategic direction of the company, an update on how TCL provides a further option to the council, to the council, to deliver its obligations for education or travel and public transport. And finally, to give assurances that the company complies with the requirements of a private limited company. The committee is invited to consider and comment on the attached report on TCL and to agree any additional comments to be passed on to the executive councillor for highways, transport and IT for his consideration. The report will be presented by Helen Reek, Support Services Manager, Transport Services, Verity Drews, Head of the Transformation Services, also in attendance for the item. Welcome both. And I'll hand over to you, Helen.
Thank you. We, as, as you've already said, we report annually to this committee, giving you some assurance that the Techile Company, which means it's wholly owned by Lincolnshire County Council, provides assurance that it's run correctly and that its direction of travel meets the council's objectives, and it's going in a way that you would expect to see. So the report is relatively straightforward, so it talks about the governance of the company, its financial oversight and performance, looks back over the previous 12 months, and then it sets out its direction and its business planning for the, for current 12 months, if you like. So without going into detail in each of the reports, I'm just going to pull out some key points that are different to when we reported to you previously. So Verity on my right, as the head of transport services, is considered as the lead commissioner now between the SEN contracts, any other public transport contracts TCL carry on out on our behalf. And what we've seen in the last probably 10 months or so is a real increase in operator meetings, so meeting outside of the formal board meeting process to go through the detail of what they actually deliver from us on a day-to-day basis. So Verity may well come in at the end and talk about that a bit more. But hence to say that it's resulted in a review of a number of SEND contracts whereby we've focused on TCL's strengths around the minibus market, if you like. So there are other operators out there who can do the smaller ones and twos, and that's worked out financially better for TCL in the long run, because it's not hooked up into these big one-service, one provider contracts it did previously. And so that's given us a chance to work with them to have a year of consolidation, if you like, about what direction they're working in and the fact that they've, because of the increased operating costs, we've been able to review all of that and get them into a much more sustainable financial position. As you know, as we've reported in previous reports about general bus matters, operator costs since Covid have, they fluctuate, they increase, they don't really go down. There's the impact on, on this sector of the market around national minimum wage impacts on, on wage bills every year. And so operators are then having to review constantly their operating mod, operating costs and work out how they can best meet demand going forward. Other changes are, is they have taken on the whole winter maintenance contract for Lincolnshire County Council, and that includes the Lincolnshire laboratory specialist vehicles. And in order to achieve that, they opened a depot that became operational early April in Lincoln to add to their other maintenance depot at Barrowby. But what we've been able to utilise with that, with a number of procurement around call connect contracts, is being able to work with them to, for them to enter the call connect market in the north of Lincoln approach to utilise that depot to its full effect, if you like, working with other operators in the area. And I think that's pretty much what I'm going to say today. So just in summary then, we're working with them to review where they sit in the market. We are working with them to consolidate their operating costs and their way forward. And we can continue to meet with them, and I can give you full assurance that there are, that as they are a limited private company as well, they do comply with everything around the company's house legislation, but they also meet, that we have the regular board meetings, we meet regularly with them, and all governance, it, it compliances with all the governance matters. Okay, I'm happy to, I don't know, Verity, if you wanted to add anything? Right, okay. I'm happy to answer questions, Chairman.
Thank you, Helen. Thank you for that report. I mean, the Techile Company has been a great benefit to this council over the years while it's been there, and I must say, saved us money, I know. Councillor Strangle?
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Helen, for your report. In your report in 1.6, I mean, I must admit, it's quite impressive that the small deficit is only £276, considering your surplus in the 21, 22 was over £100,000. The, the only thing that concerns me is you've taken on the gritter vehicle maintenance, but these gritters, I've been on this committee now 10 years, albeit not continuous, but I remember we applied for brand-new gritters. I mean, I wouldn't have thought the maintenance of those, maybe I'm reading this wrong, but is there a heavy cost in that? Obviously, the opening a new depot, again, I'm not quite sure what startup costs relate to, to open, unless you're going to build it. That's a different kettle of fish, and it would be a bigger deficit than 276, I think, if that's the case. So maybe just elaborate over those two points, if you could just put some flesh on the bones of what I'm asking there. Thank you, Chairman.
Verity is going to take this.
Thank you, yes. So, so we've been working with Jonathan Evans in the, in highways, who obviously is the lead commissioner from a gritter maintenance perspective. So one of the things that we've mentioned in the report is that, since the company were set up, which we're looking at sort of six, seven years ago now, the market has moved on significantly, as you'd expect, and that was the intention. It was there as a market moderation tool and a market capacity tool. So, so in reviewing the, the education contracts and the call connect contract delivery, we've also been able to obviously look at the gritter maintenance side and the Lynx Lab vehicle maintenance side. One of the key elements to that from Jonathan's perspective is that the, the market is very poor in terms of the delivery of those maintenance contracts. So it's not a very flesh market in terms of number of suppliers out there, and the costs can be significantly higher than what the council is able to procure TCL to deliver at the same cost rate. So, so actually, from a council perspective, it was very beneficial for us to have TCL available, to be able to do the maintenance of the gritters. available, to be able to do the maintenance of the gritters and the Lynx Lab contracts. It's something that, as we would with the transport delivery side, we'll always keep under review because it has to be value for many for the council every year. And if the market does shift, then we have to shift TCL's focus, which is what we're looking at doing on the education side. So actually, it has proved very beneficial to Lincolnshire County Council. And I have very limited knowledge about the maintenance of gritter vehicles, so I won't start talking about that in any detail. But from what, I understand from the managing director, Howard, is that actually there is significant amount of maintenance required on those vehicles, more so than I think we might expect as laypeople, but I won't aim to talk about that. Richard, did you want to come in on that?
Yeah, as Richard indicated, I thought he was probably going to say about the maintenance of the vehicles. Richard.
Thank you, chair. Yes, Councillor Strangle, unfortunately Jonathan's not here anymore, but from my time when I did work in the winter maintenance team along with the gritters, they do require an awful lot of maintenance, and that's mainly due to the interaction of the salt with all of the moving parts and the metal within them. They're obviously specially coated with paint to try and avoid corrosion. But when we used to lease the vehicles, we would expect to get maybe eight to ten years out of that lease before they'd be moved on to a spare because of the degradation. They don't do actually that many miles compared to how much, many miles you might put on a car, but it's just whatever you do in terms of maintenance, they do unfortunately wear down very quickly, and they're operating in, as you can imagine, in the winter, pretty harsh conditions. Having gone through the process of starting to purchase them, it does mean that we are able to run them longer than we would on a lease normally, and this arrangement will hopefully allow us to make sure that that really specialist maintenance that those vehicles need does get the most life out of the vehicles we've purchased, which will save us all money in the long term. So yeah, I would agree that from my experience, they do require quite a lot of very bespoke maintenance.
Yes, Councillor Strangle, you want to come back? Thank you for that, Rich.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Verity, and thank you, Richard, for your explanation. I fully accept that. I just comment on what you just said there, Richard, harsh conditions. I come from the north of Scotland, this is like tropical Lincolnshire down here, I don't understand the harsh conditions. Thank you, chair.
Thank you, Councillor Strangle. Right, Councillor Stokes.
Yes, thank you, chairman. My point and my question relates to one point nine on page seventy five. I mean, I do welcome that the things have moved on because agreed to tender out three contracts with regards to the educational travel. I'm just wondering what proportion that is of the contracts that we have within this company, and whether that is now going to be the long term ambition of this company to reduce the number of educational contracts it has, because mainly down to the additional pressures with regards to staff, staffing levels. Thank you.
Over to you.
Yep. So in terms of percentage, so those three contracts, we have sort of circa twenty contracts at educational travel side. It's slightly different at the moment because we've moved from a different contract model. So it was a one school provider contract model for the SEND schools, and we've now gone down to individual routes again, so back to a different model. So it's slightly affected the numbers, if you like. So it's quite a small proportion. In terms of where LCC requires the company to go, because that's the key aspect for us as a council, so as we said in the report, we need to undertake a more detailed market review because we all have our instincts and our understanding about the market dealing with on a daily basis, and the market has shifted to the point where, from my perspective, we have sufficient market out there now in terms of supplier numbers and capacity to deliver SEND and educational travel contracts largely. More complex in terms of the larger vehicles still, that still is an issue for the market. But the smaller vehicles, we have that ability now. So what we've agreed with TCL is that at the end of this financial year, we'll review again those contracts in entirety that they deliver in terms of educational travel. If we still deem them to be required by the council, then we can extend them and might be negotiating on a contract price basis. But if we don't, then that's something that we might well then agree collaboratively to take those off their contract list, and then we put them back out to the market. So it's all under review and making sure we're keeping that value for money check all the time, but also not removing contracts from the market that we want to thrive.
Thank you for that, Verity. I mean, I remember when this was all set up, that it was down to difficulties with the SAN market, particularly in the south of the county, and so it was a desperate need for us to take some action, but that looks as though it's improved dramatically since then, so that's good. But thanks for that. Any other comments or questions? No, no. Well, I'm going to move on then to the proposal. Thanks for the comments. Those comments will be captured by Tom and Kiara, and I'm going to move that the report be received, that the committee's satisfaction be recorded on the performance reported, and our support for the TCL business strategy for two thousand and twenty three and twenty four. And I ask that our comments and suggestions made in relation to the aforementioned be taken under consideration by officers and the executive portfolio holder. Does anyone dissent? If so, please indicate. No? Well, that's agreed then, so that will go forward as agreed. Thank you for the report. Thank you, Verity, thank you, Helen. Right, move on then to Transport Services Educational Travel Information Dashboard. This scrutiny report is on pages seventy seven to eighty six of the agenda pack under item ten on the agenda. The purpose of this report is to provide an update on progress with a new management information dashboard for Transport Services as part of the service wide transformation activity with focus on educational travel. A presentation has also been submitted as part of this report and is attached to the pack as appendix A. The committee is invited to consider and comment on the detail contained in the report and make recommendations on actions as required. The report will be presented by Verity Drews, Head of Transformation Services. Over to you, Verity.
Thank you, chair. So I'm going to focus on the slides that are in appendix A, because they're the main points really that I wanted to pull out. So the first slide talks about the purpose of having a management information dashboard, which I know we've talked about at this committee previously. But the key from an education travel perspective is there's an awful lot of data. So we have a lot of information. It sounds like it shouldn't be complicated, but it is complex data, there's a lot of it, and a lot of it is interdependent and cross cutting as well. So for us, it's about narrowing down that information and data that we have into priority areas. And I've listed on the first slide that this is where we were trying to get to in terms of agreeing, these are our main priority areas we want to focus on. So it's our passenger numbers and the trends, including projection ability, because we need to be able to project forward as best we can, which will help us to project future cost impacts and cost pressures. How many application numbers we're getting in and the trends around that as well, which we know in recent, the last twelve months have been impacted by cost of living, so we are definitely seeing increases in applications. Our contract prices, volumes, our trends, what's behind the contract price changes, our expenditure forecasting, much more longer term than we're able to do now, projecting future passenger trends using children's services data is going to be one of the key developments for the future. And then more detailed trend analysis around the different types of costs and the reasons why we have cost changes. For example, passenger assistance, the requirement for some children requiring to travel on their own and on their own with a passenger assistant. And then it's about using that intelligence in order to target efficiencies and cost savings. So we've been undertaking for some time now a partnership with our colleagues in corporate performance and data services teams. And in terms of our progress, I think it's very fair to say, and I've reported this at previous committee meetings, is that it has proved much more complex than we expected it to be. And that includes the experts who sit in data services and corporate performance teams finding it much more challenging than the data sets they've dealt with previously, which tends to focus in the adult and children care, children services, sorry, arena. So it's reassuring for me that it's complex, not just from a layperson's perspective, but also from the expert perspective. So we've got a lot more work to do, but I think there's been a lot of learning during the last six to twelve months. Because we've now got those staff on board, we've got a direct capacity in corporate performance that is now going to work with us, and so they've learnt an awful lot about our data, how it interrelates, and how we can then look to improve how we capture it, how we manage it, and then what it can show us. So I think that the lessons are going to prove very, very helpful. Fundamentally as well, as part of our new structure, staff structure, which went live on the first of February this year, there was a post in there which is a senior officer focused on data systems and intelligence and performance. Now, we've never had that in the service before, and we've been very fortunate at being able to recruit somebody who's very experienced with significant skill set. He only started three weeks ago, and he has already, within three weeks, transformed the cost data that I have access to. So I'm very reassured by the fact we have the skill set in house now. He can then work with our colleagues in corporate performance, and I think we will move a lot quicker than we have previously. So I just wanted to give you an example of the dashboard, sort of snapshot from the dashboard, so you can start to see what we're looking at creating. I'm sure, I think you will have been presented with Power BI dashboards from highways previously, so it's very similar look and feel. Now, these are, there's still work to be done in terms of cleansing this data, so it's not necessarily absolutely accurate, so it's still estimated data. The two slides that I've presented give you an academic year snapshot. So you see the dates on the left hand side, which are in American format, unfortunately. So you've got from the first of September two thousand and twenty two through to the end of June two thousand and twenty three, so roughly an academic year from our perspective. And that shows you in that graph where you've got movement in passenger numbers over that time period. Now, whilst it might, whilst the number of twenty one thousand, seven hundred and ninety passengers, that's not an end figure at the end of the year, that's how many we've had. That's just the sort of fluctuations across the year, so just not to be misled. We generally quote that we transport at any given moment in time. It's normally over nineteen thousand and under twenty thousand. That's generally our fairly static numbers that we transport. But some of the things that this data is unable to show us and actually separate out, just as an example, so item four on the, on that slide, you've got travels alone, so a hundred and ninety two passengers who are travelling alone, and the one next to that, a hundred and eighty two lone travellers. A confusing terminology, potentially, but the hundred and ninety two are those passengers who are travelling alone in a vehicle because of their geographic location. There's no other passengers needing transport within that area, so just by the very nature of where they're living and where they're travelling to, they are travelling on their own. Whereas the hundred and eighty two is where you have children who need to travel on their own because of their requirements and their needs. So they are very different cohorts of children. And for us, it's about understanding these cohorts and where can we make some efficiencies in terms of our network. So particularly, the travels alone, where it's geographic basis, there's any work we can do to improve that and not have so many vehicles with one passenger in. So these are the sorts of figures that we will start to be pulling out and looking at. And then the second one is a bit more, a bit simpler in terms of application numbers. And again, we need to be able to understand where we're getting applications from. So geographically, where are they coming from? Where are the large numbers coming from? Why are they increasing as we're seeing that they are? And how does that relate to some of the challenges that our colleagues in children's services have around placement ability in schools? Because we know there's an impact on educational travel provision from there being a paucity of places in some schools in the county. So it's about trying to work with our colleagues in children's services to understand the different interdependencies of our information and how we can use that to work much more effectively and efficiently as a service. So I think for me, that's the main points I wanted to make, chairman, but very happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Verity, thank you for that. Councillor Strangle.
Thank you, chairman, for your indulgence. I'll be going in a second, as I told you earlier. Verity, probably at a different tack, but are you able to get back to Stagecoach in any way about particular issues, for example? I'll give you the, I'll give you the issue. I was out and about in my division on Saturday, and a gentleman in Appleby Way in my division said he had two children, one goes to North Stephen School, and the other one goes to Robert Patterson School. They're actually opposite each other, different ages, but the bus, the only bus service that gets to those two schools delivers the children at half past seven in the morning, which is in the wintertime, not a good idea, you know. So I'd just like you to, I was going to get in touch with Dave Skepper, but if I could leave it with you, Verity, I'd be very grateful. So thank you for indulgence, chairman. I shall disappear now. Thank you, you'll be glad to know.
Thank you, Councillor Strangle. You're always welcome. Verity.
If you could drop me a note directly regarding the particular issue, then we'll absolutely talk to Stagecoach. We've already been talking to Stagecoach probably for the last four months around North Highcombe and the routes that are going in and out for those two schools, because we have a sudden significant increase in the number of children and pupils at the schools requiring public transport who are not eligible. So they're not eligible for the free educational travel from LCC, but they're requiring public transport. And we know there's issues around the services that are available, so we are trying to collaborate with Stagecoach and other operators in that area to work out, can we come together and try and agree some improvements there? So I suspect that's probably one of the ones that we're already liaising with, but if, I'll pick that up with you directly and we can look into it. Great, thank you.
Thank you for that, Verity. Have we any other questions or comments on this? No, no. Verity, I just wondered if you could elaborate on the criteria that's going to be used on the next phases of the project, how you're going to pick out what you're going to do next, how you're going, where you're going to go, et cetera. And I would presume our new systems and data officer will have a lot of involvement in that, but if you could just explain that to the committee, I think it would be useful. Thank you.
Yes, he's going to be a very busy officer for the next six to twelve months. So two priority areas from my perspective. So one is to cleanse and validate the data that we've presented there in terms of the application numbers and the number of passengers and the different cohorts that we have in terms of passengers, because that needs to be our solid basis of information. So that's a key priority. And the second one, given the cost pressures on the educational travel budget, will be being able to pull out our costs and be confident that the information is robust and accurate. So they are the absolute two priorities. By the end of December this year, we're intending for those to be complete, and that will enable us and greatly inform the cost pressure reporting within the council going forward and the budget requirement for educational travel from twenty four, twenty five onwards.
Thank you for that, Verity. So we should be able to see some information on that when it's presented next to this committee? Yep, thanks. Right, I'm going to move on now then, and I'm going to move that the report be received and request that our comments and suggestions made in relation to the update we received today are taken under consideration by the relevant officers and the executive portfolio holder. Does anyone dissent? If so, please indicate. No? 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 No dissension, so I take that as agreed then by this committee, and we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is item 11, it's highways, gully cleaning, repair and surface water flooding update. This scrutiny report is on pages 87 to 94 of the agenda pack and sets out the reactive, cyclic and planned aspects of the highways drainage maintenance, including low level flooding response. The actions that are required is the committee is invited to consider and comment on the detail contained in the report and make recommendations on actions as required. The report will be presented by Nathan Whitfield, principal engineer, drainage; Richard Fennick, county highways manager, is also in attendance for this item. So we'll invite members to speak after the presentation. So I'm not sure, is it over to Nathan or over to Richard? Over to Richard?
Thank you, Chair. Unfortunately, Nathan wasn't able to be here today, so I would thank him for preparing the report, but I'll be talking through it, and in the interest of time, I'll stick to a summary and take it as read by members. So just to start with cyclic maintenance, the numbers of gullies and chambers that had been cleaned at the time of preparing this report was 71,180 across the county. It's not in the report, but I would just add for members' awareness that due to the flooding across the county last week, we have pulled the the resources that were on that cyclic cleanse off cycle temporarily to aid with response to streets that were flooded during the event, to check all of the systems there off that programme. In terms of reactive maintenance, this is where we move off cycle in general. 805 assets, it says, but that will be the the pipes between gullies and the whole systems have been jetted through with off-program jetting responses throughout the year so far, which is what will be taking place as part of that response with the additional resource as well. In addition to that, the local highways teams have had around 180 at the time of report jobs, which is very minor level repairs to dig out and replace bits of broken pipe or things that just couldn't be jetted through to to improve systems between gullies since April this year. The next part of the report details minor drainage works, so in terms of terminology, these are minor schemes that tend to be more around 15,000 to around 50,000 pounds worth. So it's certainly day-to-day routine maintenance, but it's not into the realms of major million pound schemes. There's a list within the report of sites that have taken place so far this financial year. I would add to that that another scheme in Ruskin Town was finished last week in that kind of scale. And then there's reference to the works for 24, 25, and the Power BI report that we are using there. Some members will be starting to see that presented through local highways managers. The, it's a work in progress and sort of a soft launch with a live beta, as we would call it, so it is presenting live what schemes of all types that we have planned for the next few years in highways. All of the drainage schemes of that level are in there now for next year, so you'll start to see those. And longer term, we do plan to give direct access to members to that Power BI report, so it's a self-service as well as aided by local highways managers. Nathan's put in a note around some of the savings that we've realised this year, rather than take that forward and potentially have any kind of underspend. We have brought, we're just using that in year to bolster the resource we set out in April to have an additional two gully tankers. So that's for some of the jetting and reactive investigation works that's over and above the cycle, one new minor works construction gang and one new minor works construction gang that's undertaking advanced works ahead of next year's programme. So the thing with drainage schemes, unfortunately, is a lot of what's going on, you can't see. So it's harder to predict than a lot of the highway schemes, because until you open the road and actually excavate it, you're not entirely sure of the scale of what you find and what would be there. So we're trying to make more minor interventions in the first place a year ahead of when the schemes are planned to get basically cost savings and more efficiency, so we're not estimating we're gonna have a road closed for a week and end up having it closed for three weeks. I won't go into detail about the section about the parked-out streets, but to summarise, it has consistently been an issue. We're seeing that there are streets that aren't attended on cyclic cleanse, because there's consistently vehicles parked there and they're over the gullies and you just can't get into them. Even with measures where we do put the TROs in place to, and no parking cones to stop members of the public parking there for when the gully tanker all arrive, it often doesn't work. We've even seen situations where people move the cones and put them back around their cars afterwards. We are exploring all measures that we can to to make sure that we balance the disruption to the public with the fact that sometimes when people have parked on those streets, it can actually lead to their neighbours being flooded out because the drainage system isn't being able to get cleaned out. So we're taking that seriously, and we're exploring options for even being able to move vehicles ourselves when we get there, but that's something that a decision won't be taken to start doing that unless it does come back through members. In terms of scheme prioritisation, Nathan's team have been working with WSP nationally on a scheme prioritisation toolkit that, unfortunately, even with all the resource that we do put towards drainage, and as we've seen last week, unfortunately, the there are a number of schemes that need to take place to improve systems, and there's more than the resource that we have. So in order to try and decide which ones we spend our resources on first and send our resources to first, we're trying to be objective about that. So some of the categories that that toolkit looks like, and there's in the appendices, there's some screenshots of how that that might look in different ways, are road hierarchy. So in Lincolnshire, we have eight functional hierarchies for our roads that basically divide up As, Bs, Cs and unclassifieds into more categories of their use and nature. Extent and depth of standing water at the time there is flooding, known internal flooding locations, obviously, structural integrity and impact on coastal evacuation routes. So that's been developed all the time to just try and give a quantifiable, if we're gonna spend our money, this is where we would spend it first, because that is the highest priority, and just give the public some confidence that at least there is a system to where we will send our resources first, both on a more reactive but certainly on a larger scheme basis. I believe that Nathan would have said that if anyone wants to see that prioritisation toolkit in action, he would be happy for members to see that and and feed into its development, just to make sure that we are getting all of the things. In our Carriageway Scheme selection, for example, we obviously look at the the number of public reports that we get and feed that as a weighted measure into things, and that that's something that will go into this prioritisation toolkit. Obviously, we want to try and factor in that if there is a drainage issue that's not affecting anyone, we wouldn't be spending money on that ahead of something that's affecting a lot of people.
Thank you, Richard. Just on the point of that, Nathan, and feeding into the his project on prioritisation and data capture and everything, how do we feed into that? How would we do that? He said he's happy to show us through it.
Well, I would, I know he's not here to speak for himself, but John's here, who he reports to, so I would suggest that it might be useful if if we can make it work for on a future committee, if Nathan were to bring and show a live demo of how that actually works, and then take questions from members to to feed into that. Otherwise, if we need to set up a separate session, that can be facilitated as well.
Whether a session before a committee meeting or something outside in the lobby or something like, we'll discuss it, the best way to move forward with that.
I'd be happy, Chairman, to arrange a session outside of committee for for members just to to talk through it and go through the detail.
Yeah, on a committee day, either before or after, I think would be good. Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to clarify that point. Did you want to come in, John? No, happy with that. Thank you. Right, I'm gonna move on to councillor Ashton first.
Thank you, Victor, Chairman. Thank you very much for a thorough and detailed report, and it's always heartening to see the work that the team's doing out there, keeping these gullies clear and communities safe from flooding. But it is really, really concerning to see the challenge that you folks are having to deal with with parked-out streets. I'd go as far as to say that, having this brought to intense focus by the events of the last couple of weeks and the rain that we're forecast to get going forwards, that it is utterly unacceptable for residents to block the way of the gully cleaning team, to block those gullies, to block those streets. At the end of the day, this council has a programme of works in order to keep those people and those communities safe. And I am personally supportive of the most draconian measures that you can think of, right the way to crushing a car and dumping it back on the street where you found it, in order to get this message through. It should not be considered an option as to whether you can, you know, as to whether you can, you know, move the cone, move your car. Quite frankly, I'm less concerned about the disruption to the public of having to shift their car for a day so that your team can get in there and do the job and get out again. I'm I'm less concerned by that than the risks to those properties or their neighbours of those gullies not being able to be cleaned and houses getting flooded as a consequence. It's interesting to to note that the challenge presented by many, you know, the 65 streets in Lincoln alone, well, Lincoln's on a hill. If that water's not able to get down a gully and into the drainage, into the drainage system where it should do, the chances are it's gonna build up at the bottom of that hill and and exacerbate some of these challenges. And I would just like, I mean, I welcome the suggestion that we are gonna get to hear of some of this stuff going forward, but I am fully up there with the issuing of fixed penalties where cars can't be shifted. Tow, you know, vehicles, I'd be more than happy to support towed vehicles being towed, providing that we are up there with putting notices to every house, notices on lampposts, notice at the end of the street, so no one has that excuse that they didn't know. But if they did know, and they have had notice, and they haven't got their car out of the way, then I would urge you to visit every force that you can to ensure that your job gets done. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Ashton. Richard?
Just thank you for that, councillor Ashton. Obviously, we're exploring all measures that we can. We have, actually, all of us involved in highways drainage across all of the different teams are meeting next week. We were planning to do that anyways, but obviously the events of the last week will feed into that, but we're talking through all of the, we know that we don't get it perfect, along with our contractors, without that kind of measure in place, but we want to keep improving and find out any barriers they can remove that are in the way of us providing that that service.
Thank you. Just, you know, on this point about traffic, traffic no waiting or no waiting at any time orders, quite interested on how that would be implemented, and would there be fixed penalties involved with that if that was implemented? As a follow-on from councillor Ashton's question.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, there could be, as long as we've got all of the details around putting a temporary traffic regulation order in place, then it is a legal order, and any breaches of that, the police could hand out fines. At the moment, we are effectively reliant on the police to be able to move vehicles if needed, and you can imagine with such a huge programme of works, they don't have the resource to follow our gully tankers around, which is why we probably do need to look differently and see if we can be more self-sufficient in future.
Okay, I just wondered about that, because there wouldn't be any yellow lines or anything like that involved, which would be the council enforcing it. It would be the police.
Yes, we'd have to make, ensure in any of those situations that, as councillor Ashton has said, that there's letters to affected streets and the signs up and make sure we're giving everyone every opportunity to know full well. But at the moment, we already put no parking cones out along those streets, and they are often moved and ignored.
Okay, thank you for that, the clarification. councillor Stokes?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. No, I mean, I'm fully supportive as well. I mean, I'm, my division has a lot of terrace streets where this has happened. It's just pure driver selfishness, and it's just, they see their street as their carport. We need to be able to be, get there and and clear the drains. I don't go as far to say that we should be crushing cars, but I would support measures completely towing cars away. We need to be able to do this. I mean, it's for the safety of the residents that we are cleaning the gullies and the drains, and it's, I just can't believe that there are selfish people that continue to block them. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Stokes. councillor Clark?
Thank you, Chair. Like everyone else, welcome anything that improves the maintenance of gullies. When we have to report a gully, it's the same as with residents, you go and fix my street. The standard of your reply is normally, oh, it'll be cleaned in the cycle. Now, try telling a resident, it could be six months, could be a year, could be two years, we're not sure yet. Still, I'll fix my street. I was sat at home last, last week, and I received a progress, work in progress on a gully. So I waddled down there, because it's only around the corner, and I was gonna be so pleased, but there was a parked car over it. So I waddled back home, and then all of a sudden, another flash came up saying, work is now completed. But that gully wasn't even touched. But yeah, I'll fix my street. One, it was in progress, which it wasn't, and two, it was complete, which it wasn't. Now, you know, that's one incident, but the other one, what we're saying about parked cars being over gullies, terrace streets will be same everywhere. If the parked cars, you get all the debris filling up, it gets washed down the gullies, goes down the gullies, blocks the gullies. Would it be advisable, or it should be, that when these streets are empty, not only are the gullies cleaned, but the partners come in and sweep the street at the same time? Elsewise, you're gonna leave a street with the gullies done, and about a week later, it's all gonna be washed down the gully again, and then we start again. Thank you.
That's a good suggestion, councillor Clark. It's sensible, eminently sensible, if that could be done.
Hang on, Chair, after 14 years, you're saying one thing's sensible.
Thank you, councillor Clark. With regards to your first point about the responses on Fix My Street, absolutely correct. There's work to do there, and I think, obviously, we talk about the frustration of residents parking over gullies. There is also work for us as officers and with our contractors to do to improve things. The advice to our highways officers that respond to those Fix My Street reports is that if there is, the cyclic cleanse is due to be there in the next two months, unless there's obviously an imminent issue, they would pick a response on their status updates that indicates that it will be left to the cyclic cleanse to do it, because with the resource we have for off-program, it could potentially be that long before they're able to get there anyway. So if it's non-urgent, we use that response. If it's going to be longer than that, then we would expect them to be assessing the nature of the problem, and if the gullies clearly are blocked, issuing an off-program jetting report. I won't get too much into the detail behind that, but what they do is they link a job to that inquiry, which is where it will say something along the lines of, good news, we've issued this out to one of our teams. When they have attended, which I suspect, I'll have, if you let me know the specific report reference outside the meeting, I'll have a look and make sure. But what I suspect has happened is that off-program jetting resource has got there, put work in project, progress on, because they would have had a whole street to do, and where the cars parked, they've then moved it afterwards to job complete, which is an issue we're aware of, and we're working with both the BT to come up with a, just a slight difference in the status updates at the end of it, because their job complete will go back to our officer with a report on it that will show, they draw the system, and they'll say, I couldn't get to this one because there was a car parked over it, you need to go back. So the message is misleading to the public if they use the works complete, and we just need to get them to use a works complete, follow-up required message, which would send something out that is exactly what's happening, which is that they've done their job that we issued them to, but this, it's not solved the problem for the public. So I fully take that on board, and that ties into what we're doing around the the whole piece of work with cyclic response and off-program response. And then sometimes that further work could be one of the minor schemes that I've talked about, that we're talking potentially, it could be months or even a year to get the result, it might be a bigger, bigger problem that isn't that evident, and it isn't just a blocked gully. On terms of sweeping, yes, that would be great. We do, certainly on some of our known hotspots, whenever we are arranging something bespoke to put no parking cones out, we will speak to district councils to say, is there a chance that the road sweeping team can come in at the same time? But appreciate that can be difficult for them to organise as well. If we're really struggling, we might hire a sweeper in ourselves, but as Ash was talking about in his report earlier on for angling water, that all applies to our own works as well. We need to know when we've got a closure on, when we've got streets with no parking cones and a temporary TRO, we're doing as much as we can while we're there. So it's not just the gullies, it could be other little bits of work that would benefit from not having the cars there. So thank you for your questions.
Thank you, Richard. Have we any other comments or questions? Right, I'm gonna move on then. I'm gonna move that the report be received and that the committee's satisfaction be recorded on the activities reported covering the past six months period and our approval of future activities discussed. I also request that our comments and suggestions made in relation to the updates we receive today are taken under consideration by the relevant officers and the executive portfolio holder. Does anyone dissent? No dissension, so take that as agreed then. So we'll move on to the next item on the programme, which is item 12, and that's committee's work programme. And this item on pages 95 to 102 of the agenda pack enables the committee to comment on the content of its work programme. The report will be presented by Kiara, our scrutiny officer, and our actions are to review the works programme and highlight any additional scrutiny activity which could be included for consideration in the work programme. Over to you, Kiara.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. So as you correctly identified, the purpose of reviewing the work programme at each meeting of the committee is to give opportunity to members to bring forward any potential topics or thematic areas for consideration and for future addition to our future work streams. Taking our gaze to the next meeting, which will be now on the 11th of December 2023, on our agenda, we have two pre-decision items on highways infrastructure asset management plan for 2023 and the highways infrastructure asset management policy for 2023. We also are anticipating a report on rail recovery and strategic role in providing connectivity supporting Lincolnshire's communities and economy, which will be delivered in conjunction with our rail policy officers and lead strategic planners for network, for the East Region network. We will also receive a performance report for quarter two for highways and as part of which, we will also receive the major work schemes report. There will be a quarter two performance on transport activity. And lastly, we will receive the annual civil parking enforcement report. I would like to also mention that the rest of the work programme remains unchanged with one exception. The item Stamford Transport Strategy has now moved from our agenda, from our January agenda, January 2024 agenda, to our agenda for the 27th of March 2024. And this concludes my update. To you, happy to take any comments or questions. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Kiara. Are there any comments or questions? No? That's fine then. I'm gonna move that we note the report and approve the existing work programme as detailed in pages 95 to 102. Does anyone dissent? And if so, please indicate. No? No? So I take that as agreed then, so thank you. That's agreed. That now concludes the business of the meeting. Thank you, everyone, for your attendance and a safe journey. Hope to everyone. Thank you to all the officers involved today. Thank you all. Yes, did you want to say something, Richard? Yeah?
Just sorry to share, could I just say that any members that were wanting to look at the hub tour, Jonathan said, could you meet at the downstairs meeting, room one in Lancaster House? So if any members do want to go across, I'm happy to take you over there.
Thank you.